Finally, we have one item for a closed session. And Mayor, before I turn it back over to you, just one announcement and I'd like to give Council an update on what I think was a pretty neat event this weekend. It was a Navigate Norfolk event. During some of the council interests, over time, there have been questions about how do you do business with the city of Norfolk. Actually, Councilman Riddick challenged the administration to put together soup to nuts, from not just a planning perspective, from an economic development perspective. How do you engage a community about doing business with the city? We had about forty attendees, not including city staff. And the event provided an opportunity for lessons learned for us as a city, as well as a networking opportunity. We'll continue to use that feedback and launch that across the city. And I have one more staff announcement to make. I'm pleased to announce that Thelma Drake is working with the city in a part-time role as a transportation strategic planner. She's going to assist us with a number of transportation issues, and it's great for her to be here tonight, with transportation being on the agenda. Anything from the Patriots Crossing to getting additional Amtrak service to the Norfolk Transit Extension Study to the Naval Base. I think everybody realizes that she served as the -- she's the former director of Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transit, a former member of the U.S. House of Representatives, and a former member of the Virginia House of Delegates. So we welcome Thelma as a part of Team Norfolk.
She lives in the city, which is -- I mean, we know where our artists live. But Thelma, welcome. We look forward to working with you. It's really -- she doesn't need any introduction to the city government, obviously. She's worked at state government level, she's served at the federal level. I mean, so it's about as good as it gets there.
She's gonna get light rail down the ocean view. That's her number one goal later.
Okay, council interest.
Just one thing I wanted to say, I was traveling Hampton Boulevard today on notice, and I wanted to thank HRT. There was a bus stop at Lambert's Point where working people that take the bus were standing out in the rain. And I noticed it on my bus ride, taking that particular route. And I noticed it on other days when I was driving my vehicle. And I contacted the manager's office, contacted HRT ultimately, and said that the individuals who are taking the bus need to stay dry, because when they arrive at work, they are just sopping wet. And many of the people have very, very good jobs. Many of them have very good jobs in the hospital, at Harbor's Edge, and they're taking the bus to get to their employment. And they would show up wet, or at least, you know, trying to stay dry. And HRT put a beautiful covered bus stop there. It really is wonderful.
What block was it?
This is right at the Alternative School. Right there with the 38th Street. And it's right there, it's a covered bus stop, and it's right where it's needed, where people can stay dry if it's raining. So thank you very, very much. That really is important. And, I mean, HRT's just done a tremendous job. As you all know, I'm a big fan, I'm on your Facebook, I check your ridership just about every day, but I'm really very happy for what you've done. And I know the people there are very happy. So I'll take the route next week, and I'll find out as I go, but I know they're gonna be very happy. So that's all I have. Just thank you for listening, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. I've had a few calls, if we have the schools under construction, about a number of black employees that are working on the job sites. One of the things, they'd say that a lot of them are being hired by temp services. That means that they're there, in their mind, that they're not getting, you know, a higher salary if they were hired directly by the contractors. But I think, really, if we look at -- also, it's another thing. A lot of the individuals who maybe live over in, let's say, Diggs Park and Oakley Park, who can really walk to work and don't have to use transportation, are concerned that a lot of them are not being hired. So I don't know how we handle that. And I guess with the number, you know, with the Conference Center coming up, and with these schools coming up, if we could get some of the laborers, you know, within the community, I'm sure the skilled laborers are, you know, being hired, but just some of the laborers. And I believe it or not, that'll cut down on a help to poverty issue, because they're right there in the community, and they'll be able to, you know, add to the income of their households. So if we could just, you know, maybe give them a little update on that personally. I guess that's about it. What does Thelma Drake know about transportation? I think that's a great addition. You know, I was so happy to see her, and to see that she's joined the team. And if we get the momentum as she had for Amtrak, it's just, you know, marvelous thing.
Sorry, Mr. Riddick.
Amy, jump straight to you. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to do a follow-up at some of the pedestrian crossings and safety traffic designs. Mr. Riddick mentioned last week Norview at Tywheter Drive, Cromwell Road at Tywheter Drive, and Lafayette Boulevard at Tywheter Drive. If we could possibly take a look at the pedestrian crossing, meaning crosswalks, some of the signal lights there, and to make sure that the -- I see a lot of it is fading away. So if we could do that. And also, as another follow-up, we've been talking about how do we get our citizens hired for all of the work that's being done in the city? And one of the things that I think that we could possibly do is, especially with the new Conference Center, as Mr. Riddick mentioned, I spoke with the manager when he came in July. He's gonna be the manager of the Conference Center, and he lives here now. And one of the things that he's really interested, he is high on education, so he's willing to partner with us to help train some of our citizens here in Norfolk, so that they can get the jobs, and as well to promote them once they get the jobs. So I think if we looked at into something, providing training, let's put it out to the people what job opportunities are gonna be open, and let's get them trained, and so that they can qualify to get the jobs.
Peter is working with him.
One, I was made aware that the air conditioning in the new courthouse on the third floor, Marcus, is not working. The building's new, so the air conditioner should be working there. And then, just an idea, when you were talking about the Navigate and doing that again, the Commission of Revenue's Office, from what I understand, collects email addresses for all of its current businesses. So it might be a good idea to get that email database from them. And when we have another event like that, there's probably information there that can help some of the existing businesses in how to do business with the city of Norfolk. And we could use that information that they have to help the existing businesses as well. That's all.
Just wanted to double-check that the police substation that's in Pretlow is still being used the way that it was. I know there's been some transition with our lieutenants and sergeants there, and so I don't know if some of the new officers knew that that's there. But we had established that a couple of years ago, because of some of the issues that we were hearing about, and it was nice to have the police officers out front. I still see the cars there, I just wanna make sure that it's still being utilized the way that it is. I thought the headline on that article was a little bit misleading for a lot of the things that we've been working on as a city in that area. In line with that, too, I know that we've shifted our focus on poverty, but it would be great to get some kind of an update on our homeless issues.
We're very much involved in all that, yeah.
Right, and bringing that and seeing what we're doing as a city. I know we were getting periodic updates on that, and with the new housing initiative, I think this is a good time to hear where we are with that. Maybe Sarah and her folks could give us -- I don't know, Sarah, maybe you're not doing it, but maybe they could give us an update at a future meeting about where we are with that, because we see it fluctuating in that area. You know, it's not just get, there's places that we see pockets of homelessness, and it's the season now, so what are we doing to combat that and help and assist with that? I think it would be a good update for all of us to have.
Somebody from Act of Promotion View actually contacted me to build on what Tommy said about, why don't we just do some security cameras out there? The one that looks at the bus station, the one that looks at the parking lot, the one that -- I mean, it's not an expensive proposition, you know, but from the library, you could see the bus stop, with the right camera. I mean, the sort of antisocial behavior that's going on there, you can see the whole thing with two or three cameras. You know, and that seems to me like people understand that's what's happening, that clears a lot of that stuff.
I mean, if people don't --
Once they're on cameras, even in the library.
And people don't know, I mean, HRT worked with us, they put new bus stops there, there's better lighting, we replaced the lighting there, we took away a payphone that apparently was causing a lot of issues. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we've done in that area to assist with it, but obviously that side, you know, isn't always told. But I think that that's a great idea with the camera. I think if you can aim it right there, that would help catch some of the issues we're having.
REC is going to advertise the public hearing for the school board nominations for our next meeting, which will be June 9th. Okay? And so I was also going to publicize that by sending out letters to every community organization we can name, any -- what's that? Okay. But I mean, if there's any other group that you think need to get notices, any social groups, REC over the years has compiled a pretty significant list, but sometime, I mean, very often somebody would come up and say, well, nobody told me. And but so, where else are you gonna publicize it, by the way? And we're gonna put it on all our city communications. Website, it'll be in the file and in the journal guide. The letters went out to civic league presidents, to league women voters, Norfolk gangs. Well, if there's anybody else who needs, REC needs to notify, if you'll let them know that. We will hear the, we'll get the nominations on Tuesday, so everybody knows. And if anybody wants to be considered, their name has to be placed in nomination that day.
On or before that day, REC? On or before that day?
Well, at the meeting. I mean, you can send us a letter, and we'll announce it at the meeting.
Right, okay, that's what I mean.
Or just give me a list, and we'll always do that. If you have people who have expressed interest, and like Dr. Whibley had somebody express a lot of interest, and, you know, if anyone would like to meet with that person, I mean, we can do that, too. But if there's anybody that any of you think is really a good nominee, or you wanna suggest something, then the rest of us might get a heads up early, because we wanna give everybody plenty of consideration. I would like, if at all possible, to do the interviews on Thursday, the 11th. And I know, Tommy, that's a schedule, I mean, that's --
Are we gonna, like we did, select the same type of procedure, circle the top three or something?
Yeah, yeah, Sam, I know some people have a habit of wanting to interview everybody, but this city, we really need to make sure, we need to really get to the very best people in these interviews, so.
I mean, I think three people is, I mean, that's the minority of the council members, so three people.
Everybody could just circle three people.
Well, I'm saying if three people circle, it's lots.
No, what I'm saying, normally what we do, Ray, is if three council members want to hear from someone, that's what they, that person gets the interview. So I think, I mean, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
I do think we need to make it clearer to people that everybody has to go through the interview process, whether they're an incumbent or not, because there is some confusion about that, I think, so that for everybody to understand that if your term has expired, you have to go through the same process as everyone else.
So could we start at noon on the 11th? Andy, that'll help you get out of court?
Yeah, I'm good.
Get Mark, get Mark out of bed?
I'll just cancel on my page.
Cancel, you don't need to make a limit, do you?
No, that's fine. Who needs to see people?
Well, let's say none of us. So we'll start at noon that day.
June 11th.
June the 11th, that Thursday.
Is it possible to give those candidates, like, three questions in advance and have them send us their answers? Because we usually keep those to about twenty minutes, interviews, but that way we can get more out of them in that time. I mean, is that, just so we can read, there doesn't have to be pages of answers, they could just briefly answer.
Well, if you will tell us Tuesday night, after the nominations.
What questions we have?
Of what people you want to interview.
Yeah.
Then REC can get them, out to them on the 10th, and we can have them collected on the 11th for us to look at. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay? So we will have, we'll have the forms ready that evening, before you leave, to tell us, you know, who it is, which folks you want to interview, and then REC will. And we'll make it, we'll tell everybody on the 9th, and we'll let them know who's gonna be interviewed the very next morning.
One more thing, when we're talking about sending out things to civic league presidents, it might be a good idea, because we talked about this last week, as civic league presidents, they change, and they don't always notify the city that they change. So we have old information, but James's department, which James, James's department with the neighborhood specialists, they interact with the civic league presidents on a regular basis. So if they have updates to changing officers, they could, because I know Polly was working on, like, a spreadsheet at one point, trying to update everything, so they could pass that on to us, so that we could have it to update our information, just so that we could have, because they don't always call, and they just kinda think we know by osmosis or something.
And REC, when is this gonna go out, to all of the civic leagues?
It's already gone out.
So it gives the civic leagues plenty of time.
Right. Okay, that's what I had.
Ron will kick off the next series of presentations. Mayor, members of council, in July of 2012, as we were concluding our first iteration of our, at that time we called it our flooding strategy, which evolved into our coastal resiliency strategy. Through Fugro Atlantic, who had done our flooding master plan, we had an opportunity to start a relationship with the Dutch Embassy. We hosted a delegation of the Dutch Embassy here, led through Dale Morris, who's the chief economist for the Dutch Embassy out of DC, and happens to be a virginian. We started a relationship with them where they, they wanted basically to help. They wanted to share their experience of having, living in a country at 25% below sea level, and how they had, how they managed water. They knew, they had heard Norfolk's story, they knew what we were dealing with, and they wanted to help. It started at a relationship that really was about information sharing and opportunity for dialogue and technical expertise. And that led to a workshop in New York City that we participated with in New York City, the Dutch, and representatives of the White House, and then also a symposium that we participated with, some of the similar parties in Boston. That was prior to Hurricane Sandy. And since Hurricane Sandy, the Army Corps of Engineers efforts and the White House efforts for how to, how to address sea level rise, to address coastal flooding, has given us that opportunity that we're now seeing, and the reason that Secretary Maurice Jones was here a couple of months ago to announce that, you know, the Commonwealth's and Norfolk's participation to compete in the National Disaster Recovery Competition. And then also with Norfolk being named a focus area with the Good Work of Government Relations Team for being a focus area of the Army Corps of Engineers' North Atlantic Comprehensive Coastal Study, which establishes a new framework for how the Corps is dealing with sea level rise and coastal issues going forward. So that three-year relationship we've had with them has now solidified into a commitment by the Embassy to bring what is really a treasured, trademarked workshop process that they first established in New Orleans. And Christine Morris, our chief resiliency officer, is gonna tell us about what the Dutch dialogues are all about, that are actually gonna happen here in Norfolk in June.
Thanks, Ron. And thank you for this opportunity to tell you a little bit about this exciting opportunity, really an internationally important opportunity with the Dutch. So, if I can do this well? So the origins, as Ron talked about, really were in conversations between New Orleans and Dutch engineers and water management professionals, and they resulted in the first Dutch dialogue, which really was initiated by Dale, and a gentleman, an architect from New Orleans named David Wagner. And they brought together experts from the Netherlands and New Orleans to talk about how the New Orleans could think about water management going forward, and it resulted in what New Orleans is calling their Urban Water Plan, which is really their blueprint for the next foreseeable future, about how they're gonna manage water and thrive on water in that devastated community. And it really is about restructuring the way that water flows in New Orleans. And so the Dutch approach to working in this area is really a multidisciplinary approach, it's a multi-stakeholder approach, and it's also very collaborative. And their goal is this idea of not just infrastructure improvement, but innovation in design and engineering for water management, but also environmental goals, community amenities, and economic development. So they're really thinking across multiple disciplines as they look at areas and ways to manage water. So they are coming here, and it's going to be a regional effort. We're calling it the Hampton Roads Dutch Dialogue, or perhaps the Dutch Dialogue in Virginia, that's still under consideration. It's gonna be a five-day workshop here in June 19th through June 23rd, and it'll be hosted at the Slover Library. At that time, we will have urban designers, engineers, landscape architects, planners, academics, government officials, residents, all combining with the idea of coming out with some creative solutions for flood risk reduction that improve livability, amenities, and economic vitality. And I think the exciting part is that it's going to be this collaboration between both Dutch and local and national experts here in Norfolk at the Slover Library, our important new community space. So we are still working through the actual schedule, but as of right now, Friday, June 19th, will be the opening session, it's gonna be open to the public. And then they'll do site tours of two sites that I'm gonna show you in just a minute. And then they're really working sessions that go from, you know, early in the morning till late at night, we'll have access to the Slover, fifth and sixth floors for the working groups throughout that time. So after the library closes, they can still be in there working on their plans. And all through that time, the public can observe the process. And then on Tuesday, they'll report out in the morning session, and that'll be open to the public as well, with their ideas about water and living with water in Norfolk. So we have chosen an area of exploration for Norfolk, and it's outlined here. Some of the reasoning behind this, and it was in collaboration with the Dutch, is that this is an area we haven't looked at hard before. We've done with the Fugro and the Timmons studies, we've done other areas of the city, but this, this one really has opportunities, and it really has all of the landscapes that impact the city, and also many of the landscapes that impact the region. And so, you know, I look forward to working with the council people prior to this, to get your thoughts about these areas and how we ought to think about it, and right through the entire process. And then Hampton is also gonna partner with us in this exploration of how to manage water more effectively. And they've chosen this area called the New Market Area in Hampton, and one team will be developed to go over to Hampton and take a look at that site and explore some ideas about their areas, and a team will be looking at our site. And then there'll be an overarching team that will look at sort of global issues that impact all of the region. And so we have wonderful partners in this process, of course, the two cities of Hampton and Norfolk, but also the Kingdom of the Netherlands will be providing their expertise, and they'll be paying for their people to come over and be with us. The HRPDC is the regional representative, and they're coordinating this for us. Wagner and Ball Architects out of New Orleans will be joining us, and McNeil and Associates have been working very closely with us. So we think this is an exciting opportunity, we're very eager to get underway, and to hear how other people are thinking about these issues going forward, and how we can apply them to the beautiful city of Norfolk. So thank you.
Christine, I think the Slover Foundation has also committed some money.
Yes, we just talked with Harry Lester yesterday, and he's committed some money. I'm sorry, his, it wasn't up here in time, but they will be.
Just the sort of thing that we hope would occur in the Slover, so this works at a lot of different levels. I would certainly wanna throw as wide a net as possible to involve students from our universities, you know, of course Navy, I mean, we would like to make sure everyone feels welcome, our own citizens, of course, but this is civic leaders. It would be a great opportunity to, I mean, to really develop some really strong opinions about what we're trying to do, and create some momentum as well. As well as every elected official in the region, might as well send them a message.
Paul, I was, and following what you've just said, I know, we ought to look at the media side of it also, not just, I mean, we've got a great newspaper here, a great local paper, not to gain the way from Tim, but this is something that really is not, it's national, and I know Lori may get some --
We're meeting Friday with the team from Hampton, HRPDC, all partners to discuss outreach. We're looking at international and national coverage, New York and Washington coast units.
Exactly.
So we're thinking very big right now.
And I mean, you may wanna check the morning shows on television, the Fox National Syndicated ones. So that would really be, you know, and I do appreciate the Fox side that you're looking at.
We currently have information about this on the city's website, so if you wanna take a look at it, just the announcement and the information sheet about what he says is on the front page of the city's website, front page of Slover's website, and the front page of the Norfolk Library website, and then we'll work from there to continue to spread it out.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's really exciting, and the fact that it's gonna be here for several days, I mean, you can kick that thing several times, I mean, there'll be a lot of different sessions, and we hope we get extensive coverage, and, you know, I don't know, I really do mean we are invited, I know, I signed a letter to the governor, right? We've got, we've invited all of his various secretaries to come down, to be a part of this. But, you know, the Speaker of the House, I mean, people like that would be, I know Brian's got a bunch of people, he would be in, you know, you know, we can probably, Thelma probably knows a couple of people, too, who might be interested. So we're gonna try to get everybody involved.
And as you said, Mayor, this is exactly what that space was designed to do for discussions like this.
Okay, a couple of months ago, HRT, William Harrow, Ray Maruso, Julie Tim, came and gave us their conclusion for what they had done for the Naval Station Transit Extension Study, for establishing the purpose in need, and for looking at corridor selection. And at that time, we left it where then the city was gonna receive the work that had been done, and do the technical review of that work, and give you recommendations for what the next step is, which is to then move forward into a environmental impact statement study. That money has been set aside by the state for us to do that work, and Jeff Ralisky's gonna walk us through as a reminder of the work that was done for establishment of purpose in need, corridor selection, and what we're recommending to be studied for alternatives analysis in the EIS work.
Good evening. It's a great pleasure to be up in front of council, as we look to bring this phase of work to a close and get into the detailed analysis of really changing the city, in some ways going back to the future, Norfolk developed as a streetcar city, and the suburbs growing around it, and as we take the tide now beyond its limits from the initial starter line, have a real chance to reform and reshape. to reform and reshape many of our communities. Digging through, preparing for today, I found this document on my shelf, which is entitled "Study of Cost Effectiveness of Restoring Passenger Rail Service in the Norfolk-Virginia Beach Corridor, April 1985." One of the earliest things I started with in my career in Norfolk. So, we're on a journey of hopefully that thousand steps, not at step one, but we're still early with a lot to go through, but there's a real chance. When council directed by resolution, HRT did go forward and study extending the tide to the Navy base, the logic was clear and understood. This is the largest employment concentration center in the entire region, 60,000 to 70,000 trips, and as you see in the graphic, draws trips from all throughout the regions. Our suburban neighbors, Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, the most prevalent around that. So, the tide going north in the city is certainly logical for high-capacity transit improvement. The study process was initiated, it was a three-step process, looking at defining the purpose and need, what we wanted to accomplish, then to have a very broad range of alternatives to, my words, look at the universe of possible, since we had been involved for so long with the tide, where we had the alignment set, the Norfolk Southern right-of-way was there and in pieces, not having that manna from heaven for this stage open the door to look at everything. But then, once you had that kind of broad screening to bring it back down into a smaller subset of alternatives based upon what might be feasible and workable and do some screening and analysis. Key to this entire study process was a very broad public outreach and input process, and you see some of the numbers that fall behind it, but this was very robust, and I know many members of council were participants and came to multiple of these meetings. Just highlight that the Navy was extremely supportive and involved from the Admiral and the commanders down, and redid basically a couple of different public meeting exercises for the Flag Command on the base so that their top leadership would have that opportunity and input. So, and this kind of robust public outreach model is something we'd want to repeat as we go forward into the more detailed analyses. The purpose and need that generated was built around six items. You see those highlighted, and I'll just focus on the three that are in bold, and these were felt to be the most key importance. The first, to develop a transit connection to many points within the city. The idea that we didn't, in traversing and building rails going north, that we didn't want it to bypass a lot of the different neighborhoods and activity centers we have, that there was the opportunity that just getting to the base shouldn't be the only task, that we should be serving all of the city in building this system. Addressing traffic and congestion is really self-explanatory. But then, even as we're building this, as the next phase, be considering the future for light rail expansion, and especially as we talk about Patriots Crossing, Third Crossing, going to the peninsula and really creating that regional system, the need for expansion. What are the activities that came out of some of the early public? Were the pin and strings, where we asked people to put little pins and foam maps and around activity centers, and then give them yarn of trying to connect those places they wanted to get to? And you see one of the results here. The top ones that came out multiple through all these, of course, were on, you know, the Gent 21st Street area and ODU on the west side, as well as the airport, and then to a somewhat lesser extent, the Ward's Corner Military Circle, Janif areas, and you see those circled and highlighted. That kind of pin and string exercise led to the beginning of multiple, what I called spaghetti maps, where lines were starting to draw all over the place of looking at corridors and how we might connect and through, and that was refined down to a smaller subset of, excuse me, six different alignments that went into a level of analysis. And a couple of things highlighting here that, under that purpose and need statement of serving many points, you see ideas of using the medium or at least the right-of-way of I-64 going north, did not go forward because it would be difficult to serve the community being in the interstate. So, you see those types of options didn't get carried forward into detail. And then, in the areas south of the Lafayette River, that the issues of working in a very constrained area, issues of resiliency and flooding, as well as the historic district, developing a good corridor, picking up on the western terminus was a challenge. And so, you don't see one drawn there that we really start coming up Monticello and then cutting over further north, but that's an area clearly for more study, given the challenges, but then also the desire and finding the right balance of what might be workable. And within that refined set, you see of the six alternatives, then connecting back to purpose and need of congestion, many points, some of the statistics and factors that were then generated and studied, and then carried back to the community as to the analysis of what was workable. The public had two preferences. The western corridor is the most preferred route, and not surprising, given the great amount of activity and interest. But eastern corridor was the second most preferred, with Military Highway, Little Creek Road as the top choice for an eastern corridor. And what really fell out were some of the central corridor alignments. So, we're coming out of the public meeting and the refinement process with two options. Western corridor, again, south of Lafayette River particularly developed as a streetcar city, so you have a transit-oriented mix of land uses. It's how the city originally grew. We have the large University of ODU on that side, and there's a real good connectivity of that urban environment that would be served well by transit. Eastern corridor has a large population going through the way. It's a tremendous opportunity for transit-oriented development. If you think about the military corridor and its auto-oriented pattern now, shifting to a more transit-oriented development form would provide some real opportunities. You have the opportunity also to get regional connectivity potentially to the south and to Chesapeake, maybe fewer environmental impacts. And then the flooding issue, which is something that's come out as we went through the study process and the Dutch dialogue and other types of work have been going on in that process. The idea of a corridor built on some of the higher land might create some opportunities in terms of how the city strategizes going forward, and this Vision 2100 strategy that we're looking to integrate into the general plan process. How transit might be able to serve some of that will be something that we'll tie and look forward to. So, as Ron mentioned at the outset, that as we wrap up this initial screening and look process, we're getting ready to go into the formal draft environmental impact statement. Have to acknowledge when I was making these slides, I had inverted the initials, so I had D-I-E-S on the typo, so this hopefully is not a dying strategy. But we're looking at the recommendations that we have the resources to look at a combination of corridors, technologies, and phasings, and develop the detailed data set and analysis that would come out of the rigorous federal process to then provide the information where council would make the selection of priorities in terms of coming out of the environmental impact statement of which would go first and what order, how the city would grow and connect and build on the process. The kind of clouds you see represent some of those areas that we need some really good technical work, the connection from the tide on military highway alignment, whether that happens at the existing station or somewhere else, depending on whether on the east or west side of the corridor, that will need some work. That whole area south of the Lafayette River, where we have a lot of demand, but then challenges in terms of the historic nature, the, you know, the narrow streets and the resiliency, but want to spend a lot of good effort trying to, you know, and sharp pencils coming up with good options. And then also, once we get to the Navy base, there you see the top of the blue cloud, how then riders would transition from the, what I call the public system outside the gates to a circulation system inside the gates, so that they'd be able to go through security very quickly and move efficiently onto an effective circulator. Because as you all know, we say Norfolk Naval Base, it's a city unto itself inside those gates, so just getting them to one particular entrance may not be workable without that other piece. So, all of those would be part of the detailed analysis going forward. Just to highlight real quickly that under the federal process, you'd look at alternatives of service in all of these corridors. Light rail, we know well, we have the image, we ride the tide all the time, has the dedicated right-of-way, and is very favored, but higher capital costs generally than bus rapid transit. BRT, this is getting its start, or will have, as our study gets going, the system enrichment will be coming online, so we'll have a much closer real-world example in Virginia to measure against how that is stood up and starts its functioning, so that as that's looked at, again, on lower capital cost, but potentially not as much development impact as well as ridership potential. And then, again, going back to the future, streetcar in some of these areas, a smaller vehicle that can move through a congested neighborhood, not as higher speeds, as high speeds as light rail, but maybe streetcar options have some viability that we should look at in some of our really congested areas. But again, with the trade-off of not having as great a capacity as light rail and probably a lower operating speeds. The next steps, to begin the federal draft environmental impact study, the formal studies that are required under the process. We hope to begin that with council's concurrence by the fall. Julie Tim here from HRT was busily scheduling meetings with city and Navy staff to start working on an RFP and some of those issues as we look to begin procurement. Ron mentioned, we have $7 million-plus state grant funds already identified to begin this work, two and a half, three years to complete, and then ultimately, at the end of that, would be the selection of what's known as the LPA, the locally preferred alternative. This is the process that the City of Virginia Beach has just gone through, where they completed their environmental impact study and has now selected the LPA to go to Town Center as their first-phase implementation, even though the study looked at going all the way to the oceanfront and a variety of corridors and technologies. That's their selection of first-phase implementation, even while remaining committed to future phases and those connections. So, it's very good to be at this and thinking about going forward, and happy to try to answer any questions.
Yeah. What happened to the Church Street recommendation that didn't?
It was less favored both in the public process and the, you know, we had those in the screenings.
Okay, I mean, less favored by who?
Both the public, as well as when you started looking at some of the factors.
But Church Street is included in the red cloud as a connection area for any of those modes that will be analyzed as well. So, singular corridor, as it stood on that spaghetti map, didn't necessarily stand the analysis, but the area of Church Street is inclusion, particularly with its higher ground, is available and will be studied as an alternative.
I guess, I guess a couple of my questions come from the tide, the cost of the right-of-way. Have all those things been taken in consideration?
We, at this level, that would be in the detailed analysis to look at what would be the right-of-way impacts, whether you're doing partial takes in certain blocks, full takes, all those types of things. So, there would be a right-of-way cost estimate on any alternative generated out of this process that would detail that.
Because, you know, I think we really took a whipping on the right-of-way, especially going through downtown, trying to get down over to the Holly Avenue. And so, what's the timeframe? If you had your best guess, what would be the timeframe that, you know, we'd start construction on this?
You know, the challenge, of course, if, leading to a conclusion of the environmental document in about two and a half or three years, beginning preliminary engineering is another two-to-three-year process, final engineering, final environmental documents, right-of-way. And all this is dependent upon coming through a federal process and securing, you know, the New Starts Program is very heavily sought at, and so, when federal funding might be ready, it's hard to.
When we, when we did the last, I think we had the lowest cost per mile of any M start, and that was what, Ray, you remember?
Forty-three million.
Forty-three million.
At the time, in those years' dollars.
Okay, and so, we have any?
Well, there's so many unanswered questions. What is the technology? What is the alignment? Are we in the public right-of-way? How much private property, if any, would be? That's what the purpose of the DEIS is, is to identify a corridor that you all feel comfortable with to advance the design. In terms of a timeframe, if it follows the process of the tide, which is dependent on federal funding for the most part, eight years. If you follow a model in which the governor wishes to participate, like in Virginia Beach, with state funding and city funding, it could be less, but eight years, eight years to 10 years for evidence, following the tide model. You may have a minimum operable segment, you may choose to do a portion of one of those lines you see and defer the rest of it for down the road, because financially that's what you can afford. Don't forget also, Mr. Harrell was here to talk about the Connect Hampton Roads Vision Plan, which is to get out of the model of each city funding independent investments in a fixed guideway and looking for an asset that is funded through a dedicated source of funding, so we get out of that model of how we're constrained today by the cost allocation agreement. So, that's also added into the mix. Lots of opportunity, lots of work.
You probably don't have the answer to this, Baca, will we be competing with Virginia Beach for those funds?
No.
So, be independently with, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
Different parliament, well.
But implication is, on the eastern route, which will carry mostly Virginia Beach and Chesapeake residents, I mean, that, I mean, the Hampton Roads Connect folks is that they should help pay for the benefit they're receiving and to get to the naval base. And right now, they don't. I mean, there is not a method for them to do that unless we find something more enlightened. And if, so, I mean, if, and then, of course, if they could desire to participate, they could participate with us, but who knows? But if Norfolk has to go it alone again, then this, you want to call it the western route, is that it, the western route? If they carry the most Norfolk residents, they get the most use out of the Norfolk public, seems to be the smart thing to do.
Where does the south side of the city stand in the grand scheme of things? Or are they so close to downtown that they just kind of get fumbled with downtown?
Yeah, when the City of Chesapeake is getting ready to begin these types of early studies, and so, connecting north to the tide, if that ends up one of the options being Camp Estella, coming north to the tide to connect, there would be the opportunity of having this extent further as a standalone to the cost of bridging the.
having this extent further as a standalone to, to the cost of bridging the Elizabeth River, just to get to the south side, not going into Chesapeake, would be difficult. But part of a larger extension, certainly, it would be part of the analysis and discussion to have, you know, those south side connections, whether it's at Berkeley or Camp Estella, military, wherever the crossings may end up being proposed.
That was always the challenge, to get to the east side of the Elizabeth River, is to cross the Elizabeth River. Back in 1999, we looked at some options at just, just top of the valley to get there, but it was always the eastern branching Elizabeth River was the big mountain cross. And, and there's opportunities, seeming to look at that down the road.
Is there, and maybe also including like a, a partner ride type situation?
Certainly, and with a dedicated shuttle to connect at the end of the line where the investment is in downtown, can have that, or even ferry service for that matter. That's partly Connect Hampton Roads Vision Plan, it's additional ferry crossings as well. There's lots of options.
You know, the peninsula is studying right now drone system, and the idea of getting to the, not only to Old Dominion, but getting to the naval base, also prompted a study many, many years ago about a tube in, in the so-called Patriots Crossing that would permit the, you know, going under the harbor with the light rail, it would pop up at the , at the modern Merrimack, and then going up the CSX corridor all the way to Williamsburg. They, there is a rail line there, the, many, many years ago, when people really had big dreams, and you had a light rail system that went from Williamsburg to the, to the oceanfront of Virginia Beach, and you could do it. I mean, all it is, is a question of will. I mean, you could connect the region through a light rail system from all the visitors that come to Williamsburg and comes, you know, get off in Norfolk and then ride on out to the beach and spend the day at the beach. And I think someday, the logic is so compelling, we'll get there, but you got to get the, you got to get the system up to the naval base somehow to actually get to the waterfront. And Patriots Crossing, Jeff, will you just go over there and point where the Patriots Crossing lifts, lifts off from Norfolk? And it's right there, yep? See, that's the naval base piece. And that's the, and that's where NIT is, but the first leg of the, of the third crossing is actually, will start construction this September, in the, in the intermodal connector.
The, one of the things that I've always liked about the Military Highway Route is that it brings you to almost two-thirds of the city's population in the area that's not connected currently to any type of mass transit other than a HRT bus, but, you know, they, it brings them back there, and when we talk about the 200,000 people who come into downtown Norfolk every day, how do we get them to stay in Norfolk? And that side of the city is more of the suburbs of the city, where people can buy houses with yards, and, you know, they want to work downtown, they hop on, you know, light rail and they take it to downtown from there. I mean, I can imagine a, a very large hub at the Military Highway, Little Creek Road area that connects, you know, very close to Four Wards, lots of people, you know, lots of parking opportunities along Military Highway, there's a lot of new open businesses, you know, for redevelopment. And you can also even run a rapid transit down Little Creek Road to the Amphibious Base from that location, so you're bringing another base into that on the, the eastern, I mean, the west, eastern route, excuse me, you know, going from there, you, so you don't even have to run light rail down Little Creek Road to that end, but a rapid bus, people can take it in, get off right at the Military Highway, Little Creek Road, and, and take it down. But I think that route, for me, also brings in a lot more people that we want to include in the city, that, try to get them and, and celebrate our neighborhoods all through that corridor and try to build them up and get people to move here from other cities. Quicker, quicker ride.
Well, I really believe that someday, that whole loop will be built.
Yes.
And then you'll be collecting people from inside the belt and, and outside the belt, just like you said, but really, the system demands that you do the whole thing, the eastern and the western corridor.
Do you and Brett remember us taking, I guess, the president of Norfolk Southern's train? And we went all around the area which went over behind, actually, we actually went on the south side without, you know, without any problems of crossing the river, you remember that?
Yeah.
Remember that, Brett? That was a long time ago. Should we try that again?
Sure.
Try that route again, and I think you'd be surprised at how many rails really connect. And we actually got to the south side without any problems of going through, you know, having to worry about negotiating Elizabeth River. I think that would be worth, worth trying, riding on that train as work. And you'd be surprised that, that some of the other communities that we're talking about that connect, could connect eventually.
Mayor, HRT will want to see a resolution from the council, and so with the consensus of council, we will have a resolution that would recommend analysis of the city circular system with alternatives, analysis for the corridors and alternatives for the modes, mode of transit that would take in those corridors.
What you could do at this stage is do the route, the eastern route, and then drop down Old Dominion. You know, I mean, there's so many ways you can do this thing. That was really one of them, you know, when you're talking about cost, you could, that's less expensive than, you know, coming up through. But that was always the thought, too, that you could just drop down Hampton Boulevard and Dominion from the naval base, then come back up and go around, I mean, that's how you tie that all together.
Okay, so we'll schedule that for this morning. Hey, our, our next one, council, is a preview of our strategic bike plan, which will be released in July. The impetus for this was to, when you approved bike capital funding in the FY14 budget, and it was planned for out years, to have an infusion of $250,000 a year in capital funding for bikability, pedestrian improvements in the city. We didn't have a bike master plan, that, at least that had been, you know, involved with the more up-to-date techniques, particularly in urban environments for bikability that, that has grown particularly over the past decade, and we, we really wanted a third-party professional look at this. So rather than just launching and, and putting some facilities out there, we wanted a, a strong public input, and we wanted a strong analysis for what we should do. And so this essentially is the first step of a master plan, we'll build on this in the future. We're calling this the Strategic Bicycle Corridor Plan, and there, and Susan Pollak, our senior planner, will walk us through the evolution of this and what we'll see in the July document when it comes out.
Hi. So, as Ron mentioned, we wanted to come up with a bike plan. So, in June of 2014, we hired Tool Design Group, they're a group out of Washington, DC. They are one of the nation's leading multimodal transportation firms. They have done bike plans for Denver, Seattle, Philadelphia, and San Antonio. Once we had Tool on board, we put together a technical advisory group. The committee has members from the city manager's office, obviously Ron, from the planning commission, Matt Hales is part of that advisory committee. We've got a member from the downtown Norfolk council, they have a Complete Streets Subcommittee, so they have requested that one of the members of that group come and join our bike advisory committee. We have a member of the Norfolk Bike and Ped Trails Commission, representative, actually, he's their chair, Marcus, who is on our committee. We've got the TBA, the Tidewater Bicycle Association president is also on our advisory committee. And then obviously, we have city staff, myself from planning, Jeff is also a part of that group. We've got several members from recreation parks and open space, and obviously, we've got members of Public Works. So, the first thing that was done to begin the creation of the plan was to provide a bunch of background information for Tool. We gave them information regarding our existing bike facilities, what common bike routes there were. We talked to both the Bike and Ped Commission to find out where they rode, as well as city staff. Where is it that you ride? And that's the information we gave to Tool. We also gave them speed limits of the roads in Norfolk, the road widths of the roads in Norfolk, and any large transportation or development projects that were going on. Another key piece of information that we provided to Tool was a map that was proposed by the Bike and Ped Commission. This is in the Plan Norfolk 2030, the general plan, and what it is really is a representative, a representation of the bike commission's kind of wish list, where throughout the city would they eventually like to see bike plans. So that was another piece of information that was provided to Tool. So, what do our citizens think? So, we did a couple of things to get some input from our citizens. The first thing we did was, we had three public meetings. We had one at the Park Place Multipurpose Center, we had one at the Tarleton Recreation Center, and finally, one at the South Side Aquatic Center. We have a lot of very passionate cyclists in Norfolk, and we got a lot of great input about, about trails, where they should be, what some of the obstacles were, and where they would like to see new bike trails. Another tool that, oh, Tool Design Group provided us with was something called Wikimat. So that's a map-based tool where anyone that has online access could go online and draw a line on a Norfolk Wikimat and say, this is where I want to go on my bike. This is where I go now on my bike, these are the obstacles. And then, where are your destinations? Where is it that you want to go on your bike? We ended up getting 750 responses on Wikimat. Tool said it was one of the highest response rates they had gotten with this type of Wikimat database. I mean, it's just showing where people want to go, where they want to bike, where they want to ride.
So it's not actually planning out a, it's not putting a route together before?
No.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and then, one of the other things we did with Tool is, we actually got them out on their bikes and did some fieldwork. We spent quite a bit of time in the city traveling, again, we went on some of our existing bike facilities, we went into areas where we were pretty sure that a, a bike route was needed, we took them to some problem areas. We went up to Five Points, and we took a look at that intersection. So we did quite a bit of riding, and we, we did a fair amount throughout the city, citywide. So, with all of that information, the public input, the fieldwork, all of the information that was provided by Tool, they came up with 13 strategic bike corridors. Again, as Ron had mentioned, this is not meant to be a comprehensive plan. It is a core network of bike facilities, or bike, bike lanes. I think it's a really smart start. These are trails that are citywide, as you can see. I have a bigger map, I also have that I can give to each of you. The city is broken down into quadrants, and it has what you see on this map here, and then there's also a key explaining what type of bike facility is proposed. So again, these trails are citywide, they provide many north, south, and east-west bike trails, and they provide, very importantly, connectivity. A lot of the bike trails that we have now, the, the bike lanes that we have now, don't connect to anything. You kind of go out, you're at the end, you have nowhere to go. So the, the corridors provide not only connectivity to each other, but they also encompass the existing trails. So if I want to go out and I want to do a loop, I can do a 10-mile loop, I can do a 20-mile loop without, you know, going back and forth on the same trail. Types of bike facilities that are being recommended. So we've got the protected bike lane. There's a couple of different types of protected bike lanes, the one on the upper left side, that's kind of where you have the bike lane right outside of the sidewalk, then you've got that protected area, then you've got parking. Put that in reverse, the one on the right side, you've got the parking first, then the bike lane, and then a protected area, two different types of protected bike lanes. There's also a type of facility called an advisory bike lane, and that's where you've got the parking, then the bike lane, and the drive area is pretty narrow, so the cars really kind of have to share that drive area. And then the last one is the priority shared bike lane. So a shared bike lane is, I think what we all know as sharrows. The priority shared bike lane, I call those sharrows on steroids. They're more frequent than a sharrow would be, and they're, you could see they're encased in green. So those are some of the different types of facilities that are recommended through our bike plan. So, where are we? So I, I've spoken to you about what we've accomplished so far, we've, we've had public hearings, we've taken the bow, Tool out to ride, and they've made some initial recommendations. Where we are now is identifying funding sources, Tools, identifying some funding sources, some implementation strategies, strategies, and some cost estimates, as well as identifying programs and policies. On the cost estimates, what, one of the things we did ask them to do is, yes, we know that maybe a full corridor could be very pricey, so we said, can you break it down in segments? So maybe if we could accomplish a portion of a corridor that would be done, or maybe if Public Works is doing a project in an area, we could get that done. Next steps. So, in June, we hope to have a draft plan. We will go back out to the public for some final input. Hopefully, at the end of July, we will have a bike plan in place, a strategic bike plan in place. One thing that I would like to do, once that is adopted, is, there are bits and pieces of the corridors that are fairly easy to accomplish. We do feel that there are two, one north-south, one east-west, that would be fairly easy to accomplish fairly quickly. The east-west would be the one in Ocean View. We've got the one in Willoughby now, but we're going to kind of improve that, and we could run a, a bike lane all the way from Willoughby to the city line. Another one that is fairly easy to accomplish, there are sections that are going to be a little bit tougher, but would be Granby Street. So those would be two, hopefully, ones that we can implement fairly quickly and easily once the plan is adopted. And then finally, Ron mentioned, there is funding to do these bike improvements, but there are also many, many grants out there. So one of the things we need to do is find out what these grants are and kind of leverage the funding that we have to make more money, so that we can accomplish the bike plan quicker. The overall goal of the plan, we, we've said from the beginning, estimated five to 10 years to accomplish the, the plan that we have. Now, obviously, as you know, there are other plans and other bike facilities that are underway, not, not showing in this plan, but those are going on, too. And I'm, I'm guessing there will be other plans, again, not in this plan, that will be taking place as well.
Let me ask, when you say adopt, I assume you'd be in the council, want to adopt the plan, right? Okay, now who's, who, Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, Susan, is this effort geared towards recreation or alternative forms of transportation? Both? And then, I'd also, as, as we move along, I just stressed that we, we get motorists more acquainted with what's going on, because a lot of motorists, they just, you know, they don't, you know, really want to give, give way, and then a lot of cyclists, although they know what's going on, they try to challenge these cars. So that's, that's something we, you know, we really, we really need to try to, you know...
And, and the Bike and Ped Commission, that is a topic that they talk about a lot. The police are on that commission, they are looking to do maybe a video on that, but education is absolutely key.
Susan, I know that Terry and I in the past had mentioned the area, and I'm glad you said it, Granby Street, which I would assume would be basically from Pretlo to, I guess, the connection to Church Street and on, and the downtown.
Yeah, pretty much all the way down.
Right. However, one of the areas, and I know that the managers worked on this, I know Ron's probably been involved in it, is the area of Wards Corner that connects, that's basically where Forest Lawn connects into, as you head south, where the interstate comes down and connects over to where the HRT substation is. Very dangerous area. There are some Jersey Walls there, there's entrances from, or exits from the interstate, entrances from the interstate, especially what makes it problematic, is you leave an area that appears fairly safe, north, the cemetery, and as you head south, you run into that horrendous.
Yes.
And it's only about, what, two, 250 feet? I, I know that there's been a plan in the past for that. I don't know what the current plan is, have you seen that?
I have not seen it, but I know Paul Forehand and Parks, go ahead, Ron, have you seen it?
Councilman, we are engaged with the DOD on that. Good. So, we, we've had to agree to a design approach, and we're working through what that might cost now that we've agreed to potentially an approach, as there was something similar done in Northern Virginia. And so, it's an ongoing dialogue where this district is having to run to catch up to some of the other districts on, on their bikability as well. So it is, it's an ongoing agenda, I know that we have our quarterly DOD meeting, and each town, we get a little more progress on, it's, it's on the topic.
town, we get a little more progress, so it's on the top of the list.
And just so I can make sure...
If I apologize for looking at Ron.
Ron, do we own the side, the west side of Granby Street that goes toward the interstate? Across from Forest Lawn?
Near the transit center.
On the other side, north of the transit center, across Forest Lawn. Because if we do, that's the perfect, you could run bike paths from the Mason Creek Bridge, bring them down, because it's a very large, grassy area, and if we own it, it'd be perfect for that. Because those, even though it's two lanes and a median, it's very narrow.
Yes.
In fact, most people, frankly, pop into the cemetery to avoid that part of Granby Street. So as you were considering that, yeah, right away, but if that was the case, I, I...
When you say we?
We own it?
Okay.
One of the things that Tool did when they studied a corridor, they also tried to look either to the east and west or to the north and south. One of the things they did look at was the cemetery. And there's also a wide space next, adjacent to the cemetery...
Right.
That we looked at that as well. So that is part of...
It could be a dedicated bike lane, is what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
But I know that, that people do want that walkability issue, because it would connect north side, Bayview Boulevard, connected south towards Corner, which has become an area where people want to be and want to live and want to shop. So if we can just make sure, I know that there was, there was a design in place, at least one that was being considered. So we can just make sure the safety issues of that, and it's really going to have to be cutting-edge, because that really is a, almost a spaghetti junction, you have on, off, coming from various places.
Merging pretty quick, yeah.
Right. And so if we can just, that should really be a priority, if it could be. But thank you, I think it's a tremendous idea. I think if you close lanes on Granby Street, close one going north-south and make a dedicated bike, just take the far lane to the right, make a dedicated bike, and, you know, you can go up and down that one side. I mean, Terry, you do with that, we've talked about it.
You know, we need to look at this as, as part of all of our transportation. And so Granby Street, where we have too much speeding, because when it goes to six lanes, people think it's an interstate. And there's really no point in those six lanes, because very quickly, it becomes four or two. So why not just abbreviate those? And I feel similarly about Hampton Boulevard, because drivers think that is a freeway going over that bridge, and that is a perfect time, place where we can close those lanes, have them walkable, bikable, and make it safer, in addition for the cars. So I'm hoping that we can do that. I just had a couple of comments, Susan. One is, in this long-range plan, I hope that the priority on this is exactly what you said, and that's connectivity. Because as somebody that bikes all over the city, you get really excited, and all of a sudden, you're on a sharrow, and you think, oh, man, this is great. And then two blocks later, that's gone. And then you're trying to figure out where you're going to go next. So when you're making these plans, I hope that is really a criteria for doing this. So that way, you can advertise it, which is crucial, to get people to understand routes that they can take. The other thing is, I would like to see us, I know this is something that, you know, I feel very strongly about, but this takes kind of a bold step on the part of the city. We need to make a statement about, we want to do, I mean, I know Richmond said we're going to have, what, 10,000 miles or whatever it was of bike lanes, or, you know, you can get designations to be a bike-friendly city. And that, I'm sure, enhances your chances of getting grants and monies in. But that's very attractive to businesses wanting to come to our cities, tourism, and, you know, that whole, whole package that we, as a city, want to be when we're looking at healthy citizens and neighborhoods. So I'd like to see us really get out there and say, by, just like we did for poverty or like we did for homelessness. I know that's not quite at that magnitude of importance, but, but I don't know why we can't, as a city, kind of make a big stand on this.
We actually did apply for a Bike Friendly City Award, and I think we're due to hear early soon.
Later this month.
Yes. Because there are some cities, you know, I've told you all, I've been to, was in Greenfield, South Carolina earlier this spring, and that city has run with this. And I'm telling you, there were bike trips all over the place and tour groups that were coming in to bike in Greenville, and that's why they came. And it brought tourism, and it inspired restaurants, you know, it's, it's contagious.
And if I didn't mention this, the bike plan, the one that's going around now, if we can get everything done that's on there, we're looking at 60 miles of bike trips.
Yeah, but Susan is right. I went to a couple of these meetings, and people came out of the woodwork to come and talk about where they biked and what they wanted to do, and many of them were not doing it for recreation. They were, this is how I get to work, they were saying, and this is the route, and this is where I have problems. And it was really very exciting to see that many people be engaged. And it wasn't your typical latex, you know, covered guy that...
I looked at you.
You know how, how my nerves would sound.
In the fall period of the meetings, we really got some great participation.
Yeah, it was exciting.
We're talking bike trails.
Yeah, I know. Well, whatever, turn to us.
I don't know, many of you probably saw Virginia Beach had three deaths last week on, from bike class, two in one day. A lot of people thought it was the same one, but they were different ones. So that, it is important to keep educated, you know, everybody educated on this. Terry and I, actually, when I first got elected, we had talked about closing Granby Street for Saturday from one end of the city to the other and letting everybody just ride their bikes, and it goes through everybody's ward.
Is that when we had committees?
Yeah, that was when we had committees, yes.
That's one of the reasons we killed it, right? Just some concern.
We do it for the parade, so I think we could do it for cycling if we want. I want to shut down for the Greek Fest, Andy. Shut down Granby.
We need to keep the drive-through.
Yeah, good, that's right. I think we could also step this up, too, and add some bike repair stations. I've been in a couple cities where there are along these routes, where there's tools attached, there's air...
Well, we have a couple already, but we need more.
Right. And making sure that those are in strategic places. I am concerned about the maintenance of our current sharrows, just like we talked about with line painting, with the snow and the sand, it's like sandpaper. Some of the sharrows are now not as visible as they used to be, and I think some of that can be fixed also by adding more signs. I think we didn't do such a great job with our signage when we put the sharrows in on Granby Street from Pretlo down. I think there's like one sign in the beginning and one at the end, and I think if we had those along the way and share the road type signs, and going back and remarking some of those. And then, maybe I'm missing this, does our downtown have a bike pay program yet where you can put your credit card in, take a bike if you want to? Do we have...
Yeah, we had a couple of companies come in.
Is there an issue with that when it comes to...
We did a request for proposals on that and didn't receive any, and sometimes it's a chicken and egg, and we did have that as an option, that when we did the RP for this strategic master plan for respondents, they, we had one company that, they weren't the company we selected, but it's still, it's still in planning.
Okay.
I believe that this stuff, and starting to implement the Complete Streets, you know, initiative and the bikability that we have in the capital funding, will get us incrementally to a point where we think that a better consideration of that, it is a significant capital expense initially, and so we'll need a partner that would be, that would help underwrite that, particularly because some of it is right-of-way access. We've done the estimates, we have an idea of what to do, we just, we do need some enhancement of our corridors here.
Now, are we, so we have to pay for part of that in order to make that work, so we can't just turn it over completely to a...
There's all kinds of models.
Okay.
And we've met...
And not charge a company, basically, if they were to offer that as a service?
There are all kinds of models, and so we've looked at those, and we will reengage on that as we start to roll out the plan. A couple comments and feedbacks, so when you see the draft plan, Dr. Whibley and Mr. Ruffier, which you were espousing, as well, is the term that's out there these days called a road diet. So when you see road diet mentioned in the plan and the corridor pages, that's taken a lane, we're using that for either transit or bike.
You need to come up with a happier term.
In terms of the second, it's, Winter and the Recreation Team are working on, which you espoused, which is commonly referred to, it first started, I believe, in Bogota, Columbia, Sequoia. It's often called Open Streets, and we do have one that's in the works in coordination with Bike and Pedestrian Trails Commission for this fall that's being worked on.
You know, years ago, we had something called Elizabeth Work and Run. If you remember that, it started up by the naval base?
Staff college.
By the staff college, and we shut down Hampton Boulevard that morning, and you ran all the, basically, I guess you finished it downtown.
Town Point Park.
Town Point Park, but then it started, it got confused with cruise ships that were coming in, it was, it was...
Graduation.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, of course, the people, some of the folks saw, were trying to use Hampton Boulevard, you know, to lane, but, I mean, something like straight down Granby Street on a Saturday morning, early, you know, I mean, would be wonderful. I mean, really? I think we only shut off half of Hampton Boulevard, as our recall. Then we could do on one side, and you could, you know, it'd be a big deal.
After you got over the bridge.
Yeah. And it isn't straight.
I went back to Wards Corner, civic lane, last night, my wife thought I was nuts. I was very comfortable doing it. Streets were nice, the sun was...
Ron, well, I don't know what you, what you were thinking about.
I had a flasher on my rear end.
What was the Spanish you lost out there?
Sequoia or Open Streets.
Sequoia, for what? What are you talking about?
For this fall. We're going to try to do it downtown to bring people in to bike throughout the town.
Okay, why don't you run it down Granby Street?
Well, it's going to be a lot...
I mean, why don't you start at Wards Corner, break it down or something, or start wherever you want to. Start at Oceanview.
What was it called? Sequoia. I just wanted to hear you say it.
Yeah. Sequoia's going to change.
So feel for Gary or not.
It brings to mind my checks. Good luck. Good job.
Ed Race was the best thing. I mean, it was too bad.
They want to come back?
It's too bad, we ought to bring it back.
They want to come back?
It was, it was wonderful.
Yeah.
In the day, I actually ran it every morning.
They want to come back?
It's a coward's strike. Except when you had it in your palm.
That's when I had it, right. But I was thinking, but it was a great time, you know, you could, I mean, it was a huge community celebration, too. And they had great pictures of everybody coming over the Hampton Boulevard.
One closed, such a ban.
Everything old is new.
Okay, let's do it.
Anyways, council, seven months, closing, you know, May 19th, 6:30 PM. The purpose set out in clause 45, section two, review that's been submitted.
I'm sorry.
That is a contract that involves the expenditure of public funds. And discussion of the terms of such contracts, for discussion of the such contract, first the effect of...
Yes, aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Fratigera.
Aye.
Andy.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Frank.